Here. Ewes. Gorman. Here. Kaiser.
Here.
Maple.
Present.
Fields.
Yes.
Tomcheck.
Yes.
All present at the bar. Item three, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four, approval of the agenda. We have a motion by Tomcheck and a second by Kaiser. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item five, approval of the minutes, and we have quite a few. Is there a multiple on one? Or? We have a motion by Mark Ewes with a second. With a second?
A second.
And a second by Zebra. Questions?
Well, the record reflects that I have stated that Moses was not present.
Any other questions?
Need to make sure it was there for all of them.
Okay, don't.
Just a second, okay?
Sure.
You were, Kevin.
It's February eighteenth, nineteen?
I'll make it a second then.
Well, we get a second, so I just wanted to see any other questions. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
I'm abstaining from the march vote.
Item six, the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. This time, is there anybody in the public that would like to address the board? I'll ask again. And one more time. All right, we're moving on. Item seven, special presentation reporter update from School Resource Officer Procy.
I'll just wait here a second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So we move ahead on the agenda until at such time the presentation is ready.
It's ready.
It's ready.
All right, so I appreciate you letting me come in and give you the 2019 update. We'll go to the next slide. So I just wanted to bring up some numbers compared to this year and previous years what we had. So last year, I did all my numbers from the first day of school until today's date. Last year, I had 1,284 contacts, and this year, I have 1,265. Now, contact is anything, a form of a contact with a student, saying something in the hallway or a quick conversation in the hallway or in the classroom does not consider contact. A contact would actually be a full conversation, engage with a student about any form of a topic. It could be a positive interaction, or it could be a negative interaction. I don't deem any of my contacts to be negative in nature because I'm trying to correct the problem instead of saying, "This is a negative contact that you're having with Officer Procy. Let's try to make this negative situation into a positive thing so we can stop it from happening in the future." But I just want to show kind of how often I end up dealing with students on a daily basis when you break it down. So truancy issues. So I went back in the 2015-2016 school year, was the first year that I worked full-time in the school. Statistics going back when Officer One was there, it's kind of hard to go through his data, so I didn't want to add it on there, but he roughly averaged between 110 to about 130 truancy issues. So when I took over the first year, we had 137 truancy issues, and this is through all schools, mostly for high school and the middle school. I think one of those in that year was elementary. At that time, really didn't understand the truancy issue and how to address it, so we addressed it by using a letter, contacting parents, and actually calling each student in when they were having an issue with truancy. Instead of just saying, "Come to school," that clearly wasn't working. Saying, "You need to be here," everyone knows they need to be to school, but I took the time to start asking, "Why aren't you here? What's going on at home?" Instead of saying, "Come here, what's going on at home?" And you can see that every year, it's decreased. So now, this school year, we only had 35 issues for truancy compared to the first year that I started at 137. These numbers are from the beginning of school until today's date, so that's current up-to-date. We'll go to the next one. Contacts criminal nature, this would be any form of an arrest or a citation that occurred in our building. This is all three schools. You can see the first year was 134. Before I took over, I averaged about 140 to 150 criminal contacts in our buildings every year. As you can see, going down, this year, I only have 25 criminal contacts, so that includes arrests as well citations. I think the big reason why I'm seeing a decline in this is for the fact that administration and myself work very well hand-in-hand. Any decision that's made, we sit down as a group, so if it's, "I gotta go to the high school or to the middle school or the elementary school," we sit down and say, "This is what we're running into with a particular student, how can we address this, and what would be the best way of going?" I have the ability, when it comes to a criminal matter, to override them, but I like using their brain power because when we all come together as a group, I might be missing something, and maybe, like Mr. Sweeney might say, "Hey, if you think of maybe this approach, let me go that route instead." The proactive is the big thing. We've been proactive with our anti-bully policies where we have, where you can report if someone's being bullied. We just put into place if anyone's caught with a jewel, so a big smoking device. It was a huge problem in our school to begin with because it's the new thing, everyone wants to do it. So we did an approach to come up with an idea, "Let's promote by bringing people to come to us." So you can say, "Hey, this buddy over here is smoking a jewel." We will give you something. We'll give you a $20 gas card to get that out of our building. Ever since this has come into place, you don't really hear about jewels anymore. It's kind of gone to the wayside. It's not an issue anymore to school. Do kids still have a jewel on them? Yes, we're never going to be able to get it completely out of the school, but it's not that big hype and talk. We were running into problems where people like on Snapchat would literally Snapchat themselves with a jewel, and they thought it was cool. Well, when you start passing out $20 gift cards to everyone, they immediately come, "Ah, this person did this." Kind of my $20 gift card, you bet if I can go ahead and catch that person. And that's kind of where that trend is. I think being proactive the way that we are, I never really paid close attention to my numbers until I did this, and I was quite amazed they go from 134 to 25. So that proactive approach is seeing, seems to be working very well. We'll go to the next slide. So expulsion manifestations. I collected this data as well. So the first year I started, we had six expulsions and six manifestations, a total of 12. If you're not familiar with the manifestation, it would be equivalent to an expulsion but someone that has an IEP. Next year, we had a total of 10 manifestations and zero expulsion, a total of 10 altogether. The following was seven expulsion, five manifestations, and a total of 12. This year, with our proactive approach and doing things different, zero. And no one has even made it to the pre-expulsion hearing yet. So by sitting down with the kids that are constantly causing these problems for us, just like in our community, we have a very small group, like a 5% of our group we deal with daily out there. The rest of the people in Mozzany area, I never deal with. It's a positive interaction, or I don't know who they are, where they live, but that 5% is the same group I deal with every single day. Same in this school, it's a mini-community. I deal with that same group of people. If you know how to deal with them and build that positive relationship, you'll see those numbers go down because you can stop it before it happens. So that's kind of how our numbers are. So now that my numbers are now lower, I can actually go into the school and do what I actually want and end up doing. This was the main reason why I wanted to get into our buildings, was to actually have positive interactions with our students. Instead of always going, they call it the school-to-prison pipeline where I just come in and hand out tickets, that doesn't fix anyone's problem. It actually creates more problems for the community when these kids get older. So now the fact that I don't have to sit down and deal with 130-some negative contacts with criminal contacts, now I can end up doing positive things. So we have a restorative justice program. Any SRO in Marathon County can take advantage of this. The particular student there, his name is Hunter, he was an individual that caused me a ton of problems. Nice thing is, is he got into this program, and we were just recognized nationally through goodwill for the fact of the work that we're doing, myself and Paula Schultz with our students. I send a lot of our students to Paula Schultz, and we work together as a team. Instead of handing tickets out or sending kids into jail, we end up correcting the problem. Ever since this individual has been in this program, he has not caused a problem since. He's been completed for about a year and a half now. Prior to this, I dealt with him daily. Normally, I would never use the name, but this was a national thing that was pushed out, so we got recognized nationally through goodwill for this. And this is something I enjoy to do because of the fact that I can actually see a positive outcome of what I'm doing in the school instead of seeing this negative approach. I got a kid who caused me a problem every week, who never caused me a problem again. If anyone's wondering why he's not smiling in that photo, he was sicker than a dog that day. I'll go to the next slide. This is another thing that I'm doing, and this is also why I believe our contacts are going down. So currently, I meet with 39 students weekly. When I meet, that's not a "hey, hello," that's actually coming into my office and having a follow-up conversation with me as a counselor. Most of the kids that I meet with are at risk, they're the ones that are constantly causing my problems for me. I've noticed that if I start building this positive relationship, and I talk with them and say, "How's it going? What's going on in your life?" And I give them that time that they're not getting a home, or maybe not getting from another adult, they open up to me, and I can have these conversations with them to stop them from doing something negative within our building. Most of these kids that you would see with these 39, a lot of them are also our mental health issue kids, so they run into problems or they were creating contacts for me for having to take them to mental health, so I went to Vegas to receive mental health counseling. Part of my drive out of Red High School was approached by some students, and I decided to be the advisor of it, but we also started a suicide prevention club. Ever since this club has gone into place where these kids can end up meeting weekly and discussing their issues on how they handle it, I have not taken one kid from the high school for a 51-15, which is a mental health commitment. Prior to this, I was dealing with a mental health commitment about once every two weeks where someone had to get removed from their building and send them to one Vegas.
Are you meeting the kids one-on-one, or do you have like group therapy?
So the suicide prevention is a group thing. The 39 kids are one-on-one. So they'll set up an appointment with me, or some of them will just say, "Hey, every Thursday, I come in at 6:00, and at 6:00, at 6:00 hour," or they'll email me saying, "What time can we end up meeting?" And a lot of times, you'll get the ones where they're having an emotional day, and they say, "Can I see you right now?" Absolutely, I can drop what I'm doing. I always tell kids, "I will drop anything I'm doing unless there's a reason that I have to be someplace else, like it's a major issue." If it's just like I'm in a classroom having a discussion, or I'm walking around the school or talking to staff, none of that will trump what that kid's going through by that point. I tell all the main office, "Just radio me, and I'll come and I'll take care of that student right away." The caught being good, don't mind my artwork, I had one of my sixth graders probably pick out artwork, that wasn't my choice. Currently, at the middle school, they came up with administration, middle school, they came up with something that I was 100% on board with, called the caught being good. It gives the kids who are working hard in our building the opportunity to have a positive interaction with me, so they can turn in these crowd slips, or these caught being good slips, and purchase something with it, and they can have all kinds of different things. I have, right now, I've dealt with 70 kids, and it keeps counting. These kids turn in their slips, and they get to ride in the squad car with me, and we go to McDonald's, Subway, Lynn's Garden, or the Mozzany Cafe, and they love it. Hit the siren, I do all that stuff. We go for about an hour, and the nice thing about this is I'm building a positive relationship with the students, but it's great for the community because the community sees me. Every time I go to McDonald's, they always ask the kids, "How did you get the opportunity to come with Officer here?" And they all say, "Because we were caught being good and we worked hard. We worked all year to get here, and it's my treat now to take them out and have fun with them." I get approached by the parents, you know, "This is awesome, my daughter is nonstop talking about this and saying she's got to go with you." She really enjoyed it, and she's actually earning more slips to go again. Problem is, this became such a big thing too quick that we had to pump the brakes a little bit and said, "Okay, Officer Crowsey can't go out to eat every single day." "I can't eat at McDonald's anymore, I'll still go, but I can't eat there anymore." But it was just another opportunity to build that positive relationship, and I wasn't able to do that in my previous years because I was too busy dealing with all the issues that were coming up in the school. So this way, by building this rapport with the students, I'm eliminating the negative aspect of the school. This was new. This is Haley, this is my current intern. Haley is the only person currently that I know in the state of Wisconsin who got the state of Wisconsin to approve this intern program through Mozzany. I give her 100% credit for this, but she started something that became now vague. I have to go through five interviews this year yet for kids who want to do it next year. She earns college credits with me, she works with me a minimum of one hour a day, up to two hours a day. I have to be careful when she does work with me in the school though because of confidentiality, so we do different things, like positive stuff. Like this particular day was when we did Halloween presentation. She created the presentation, I went through it once or twice to kind of help her out, and then she took over. So every day that she works with me, she ends up getting a letter grade, I have to do a report on her, and then she ends up earning college credits because her hope is to become law enforcement down the road. But now, this is something that I have created and I will stick with for our seniors that come, so currently, I have interviews coming up with the seniors that were interested in it, and I'm only taking one because I can only handle doing one with everything else that I do. But interviews are coming up for that pretty quick. And then the future, I'm not going to read all of this if you guys want to read it, but pretty much what I, my goal is for the future for the Mozzany School District is to continue to build that positive relationship with the staff and the students. Now, I'm a big believer that if I build that positive rapport with the students, I'm going to have them create a positive opinion of myself. If I create that, a positive opinion of myself, word of mouth is a contagious effect. They'll say, "I went to Officer Crowsey, I had an issue, and he addressed it, and I felt comfortable. Maybe you should go and talk to him." And if that person enjoyed it, then the next person will do it, and it continues to keep building over and over and over again where I can end up, make one big decision, I can get a bunch of kids. Also have to be careful because I'm human too, I can make a mistake, so I have to be careful on how I handle a mistake if I end up having one with the student. But pretty much, I want to continue that proactive approach to build and work hand-in-hand with administration. I can't come up here and say those numbers are changed 100% by me, that would be just a whole face slide. Those numbers are changed for the fact that administration and myself work hand-in-hand, and we have, what we have currently going right now is working, and I can prove that it's working based off the numbers. Those numbers aren't just typed in there, those are open record numbers anybody can get a hold of, but you can see the trend is going down because of what administration and myself are currently doing. My big thing is, my future goal is to continue to do training. My boss is very, very big on letting me do training, do better myself as an SRO, and then by me doing that, I can also find ways to utilize my time better so I can be in different areas and be more proactive as well as be more efficient in these different areas for the district. Sadly, there's really only negative about the SRO, there's only one of me. I cover, you know, over 2,000 people with our staff. There's only one of me. It's hard for one person to be everywhere, and I think administration sometimes knows that, where they feel like, "I need you here, but I'm over here." So I try my best on what I can end up doing, but due to the fact that this change is going in a positive effect for us, it gives me the ability to actually do things with those students that I couldn't do before.
That's really awesome.
Given the current data, do you feel that you can adequately provide coverage to all your buildings?
No. Nope. The reason being is, if I was given all the money in the world and then you said, "Go ahead and hire another SRO," you'd want an SRO in your elementary school all day, every day. You build that relationship there because when they get older, they're easy for me to deal with because they've already built that positive relationship with the SRO. But the problem is, they're little, and they don't know how to necessarily address their problems. Like, "We go call Officer Crowsey and have him come here because I had a bad day at home." They don't do that. Middle school and high schoolers, they just come busting into your office. "I had a bad day, sit down, I gotta talk to you." "Okay, tell me everything about it," but ultimately, I can't, one person can't cover that many people because if I have a mental health crisis, which is a problem in all of our communities, one call at 8:00 in the morning can take my entire day up. So now you have no SRO in the building all day, just off of one call. So now, the entire district suffers because that SRO is not there. Or if I'm, you know, I'm human, I'm sick, or my kids get sick, and if you ask any of the administrators here, "Any day that I'm sick, I get a call." "Ah, something, you need to address something tomorrow." And it's not that they can't do it, but it's at a law enforcement level where, "Okay, now maybe I need to address this." And if we had another SRO there, they could bump themselves in. If you look at any other district, for the most part, you have SROs, each building has their own SRO for a reason because one building, you could technically have three of us, but we're expensive. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, we're not cheap to have in a building. But I think that I was able to show that having me or an SRO in the building is doing our district well because it frees up the time of our administrators who can now focus on other things instead of having to do disciplinary stuff, as well as it makes our community stronger as a whole because now when they come out of school and become adults, they're a better fit for our community where I don't have to deal with them in a negative way.
Officer Crowsey, this is impressive. I've seen reports like this in other districts. We talked about relationships and trust and all those things, it takes time. And the question is this, there are some communities where the boss or the police force expects to see your SROs rotate back into the regular, I hate to say regular, but they take them out of the schools after having been there a couple of years.
Correct.
How does that work here? Because it takes time to do what you're doing, and we'd hate to lose you, you know, because the trust has to start over.
And that's a conversation I've had with my chief. My chief is a believer that, I'll kind of quote him, "We have spent so much money on you for training that to train another officer just wouldn't make sense." And he goes, "I will never move you from the spot unless you come in and you say, 'I'm done,' or you have given you a reason." He goes, "I've never heard a negative reason to pull you out of our school. No one's ever come, you've never had a complaint filed against you, and you're the only one that I know of who comes into work every day and is like, 'This is awesome.'" I'm the only person in the school that when we have a snow day, I'm like, "Ah, dang it." Only one. Everyone else is happy, and I'm like, "Ah, I gotta work the road now." You can ask me, the administrators, "Oh, ah, dang it." And I purposely left a good spot at the sheriff's department because I wanted this SRO spot. So that's why I feel that by me wanting it instead of being put into that place, because we deal with other SROs and other, you know, districts that are forced into it and they hate it. And you can see, when you go into work and you hate your job, the kids already know that I don't want to go and deal with them because he's not even in a good mood, and I didn't even talk to him yet. When I'm at school, I enjoy being there every minute. I don't mind one second. I ask my wife, she's like, "Sometimes you're almost too excited to go to work." I'm like, "I love my job, to me, it's not work." I honestly cannot believe I get paid to do this. Like, sometimes I feel like I'm robbing the police department, like, "I get paid to come here and do this and have fun with kids." We got to go skiing the other day with some of our kids. "Well, I said, 'You're asking me to pay you to go skiing?'" "Say, yeah, my job is to build a relationship." He goes, "I can't deny you that, that's true. Got to go skiing all day with kids, I loved every second of it."
Good news for us.
Any other questions, Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, student board report. She's not here.
Carly is leaving in two minutes to New York.
Did everybody receive everything, so if you had questions? I'm sure Neil answered.
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, new business. Item A is discussion and possible decision on acceptance of the county concrete donation.
Either Steve or Brent, I think one goes to and the rest is one.
Okay. Well, we dealt with the county concrete when we worked on the field, you know, with the MCA field. They basically go ahead and all of our concrete, all of our blocks. So basically, we're going back to them because they're looking at putting a nice batting cage in off the side of that, and concrete would make a very good pad to make everything fit. So basically, Zach contacted, decided to take foundation, and they're going to donate the concrete to us. So that's basically what we're asking for, and that'll be done sometime this spring when the stone goes away and we can get out there and get it pressed. So that's really where that stemmed from. But I'll make a really nice batting cage bolt-in section that will look really like a football game.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Corey Tomcheck and a second by Mark Ewes. Questions?
Yeah, you know, I think the donation there is pretty good. The sentence that I don't understand it, "The batting cages can be started at DC Everest High School," by Adam Olson. Is that something that the Mozzany Manufacturing Lab should be doing, or be interested in doing?
You know, I guess I could say that Adam was a baseball coach, so he basically met with Zach and presented billing that to his class. I don't really know if Steve wanted to at this point in time, I couldn't tell you that, Kevin, I really couldn't. But basically, he had all the pricing and the design put together. They built one like that, I believe, at the DC Everest. So that's basically where, kind of what nobody stuck up the plate, they wanted to do it from our district, so that's what I know about it, to be honest with you.
Did we even ask our district?
I think he was CC'd into that in emails, that's what I could remember, so. But I don't want to speak first to you, so.
Any other questions?
Who's installing it? Says Zach is using money raised from the pipe pump donations to pay for the concrete install, and the new cages, we would recommend.
Tyler Dolphy's installing the concrete. Tyler Dolphy's pouring the concrete.
He's doing that piece of work.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item B, discussion and possible decision, approval of the fall 2019 Start College Now and early college credit program applications.
We do this every year. Do you have any questions? I don't know.
I haven't shown any.
So I'll go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike Kaiser and a second by Jessica Maple. Questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item C, discussion and possible decision, update on instructional hours regarding snow days.
And once again, we started the year with 179 face-to-face days with our students, which represents almost 1,200 hours of instructional time, 1,199 hours. In the handout, it's pointed out that at the elementary level, we need 1,050, at the high school and middle school, we need 11,37. So far, we've had 7.2 days, seven full days, and a early dismissal, excuse me, a later arrival, I believe. 7.2 days, which basically leaves a little over 13 hours of time that we have for the remainder of the year. Now, again, I've been told that, I think a year ago, or a year ago on April 15th, you had one of your major snowstorms, but if that doesn't happen, we'll be in good shape. We could afford to miss one more day, and we would not have to make anything up. So we're allowed to have another full snow day, and we still wouldn't have to make up the instructional hours. If we missed another day behind that, the plan in place would be to have the last day of school, which is currently a half-day for students, become a full day for students. And that would give us enough time so that we would be able to have two full snow days. If for some reason, things start getting nasty and we miss another day or another day, then we will make it up at the end of the year. We had quite a bit of discussion about whether or not it made sense to try to add things on in terms of 15 minutes here or 20 minutes there, and in talking with our building administrators, the challenge is when you're really not sure if you have to make something up, the inconvenience is often for parents in terms of daycare, in terms of places where they have to come and get their kids. It just seemed to make more sense this year. Right now, we're in good shape. We can miss one day, we miss two days, we'll keep our students here through the end of the day on June 7th, and hopefully, we don't have to go to a third day, but if we do, then we'll have to bring our students back on that Monday, and that still allows us to stay up summer school on Tuesday, but if you get some real unusual weather, and I suppose that's possible, then we'd have to move summer school back. So the plan right now is to simply say to parents, "We're not looking at making any days up. We can have another full snow day, we'll be fine." Unless the board has some other thoughts, but this was more of an informational type of thing. The advantage this year is you had a hundred and seventy-nine face-to-face days, you've got some time built in. Next year, you're down to one seventy-five face-to-face days. That'll be far more challenging if you have this kind of a year. Questions?
Are you motioning to make no changes unless, unless required by the board?
Okay, so a motion by Corey, is there a second? And a second by Amy Ballman. Questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item D is new, um, from last week. It was discussion and future, future plans to address drainage by the MCA complex.
Again, Steve's going to address this item.
Sure, yep. Um, thank you. Of course, last week with the fast melting and everything else, though, uh, we had definitely had an issue on range line from the youth baseball parking lot area. That is a naturally low area and always has been a low area. But since the new field, uh, which is shown right to, uh, right in the center where the red dot is, that field right there, yes, that, um, is now, uh, prepped to, uh, to the, to the appropriate levels. So basically, what happened in the past when the water came out of Little League Field to the right in that parking lot, it fell down to that void where the new field is. It was like seven foot low in there. So now that's prepped to site. We know that's a low spot area, um, so basically, uh, we're going to work with REI, who did the original design on this project, um, and our goal is to get that water to go to the west. There's just really no outlet anywhere pointing east of range line because the city doesn't have any storm there. So there is no way to relieve the water, but to the corner, if that's not going to help anything. If you want to look down the next slide, please. So if you're looking at that field, the range line being on your right-hand side, the big yellow arrow shows, um, the flow of the water. That's how we anticipate to move that water. There's a low area kind of behind the field that's naturally there. And it's there because if you're going to have water come up that parking lot, it, it should absorb all summer long with no problem. Unless you have a really heavy rain. If you have heavy rain, that water will go up to the, to the, uh, to the west where the arrow is indicating. Uh, but then if you get to shoot some grades, they'll sort of find exactly where the, where the level is to make that happen. But the whole complex, where the arrow shows pointing to, to the left, uh, the whole complex is set up to take the water that way. So we just have to get it off of that troubled spot, to be honest with you. And the question we have now, like I say, in winter time, you have frozen ground, they can't take anything. You know, nothing's going to absorb, so we have to make sure we can pitch that that way. So we're going to meet with REI next week to sort of get them out there, take a look at it, really have a fine, uh, plan, and then we'll get some numbers on what it's worth.
I mean, mostly table any type of activities until we have an idea of what our budget looks like.
Well, it was just a discussion.
Oh.
So, well, because we get a call, actually, I get a call and I wasn't home. They called that person.
Why would we do any of the engineering work until we know if they're going to have it in budget or not?
Well, it was just a concern citizen was calling because it's interfering and it was basically a development of the layout. It was more worried of the concerned citizens across the side of the road that they did not have these issues or feel that because we developed this land, it's part of our issue. So we're just, at this time, looking into it.
So that's kind of what we're simply know what we can do with. But that is how the site was designed, is take it that way. But that's, that's what we're considering now, so I'll bring more information back to that.
And once again, you hate to say using fund balance money, but fund balance money is for those one-time projects that you didn't plan on. The boiler breaks or something happens. I also got calls over the weekend from the people living on this line. And, and again, I think this started as a project where the guards was involved. Most of you around here perhaps know more about this than myself, but, uh, the guard probably wasn't able to finish everything that they had planned on doing in terms of the original plan. I know that in a sense, for ten years, it was not totally responsible, but it's still our property. You've got neighbors over there that are saying, "What are you going to do?"
We all do a little bit of a run this way.
From being flooded, so I think it's at least responsible for Steve to get some quotes, bring them back to you, and then you're, again, are going to have to take a look, um, even with the type of budget facing. This conceivably could be a fund balance type of thing where in order to live up to the responsibilities that we said we were going to have when that project was being planned, I don't think we can just leave it alone.
I just want to, I really just want to just thank the city because they came on site right away. Their crews were great. They brought, uh, ran the trash pump and moved a lot of water that day out of that hole. They all went to where the arrow went, uh, we just couldn't go over the hump, but, uh, they were there all day. So I, I told Kevin to stop over yesterday and thank them and the crews, like, because we couldn't handle that. I had no product to move all that water, uh, but they were just really great. So I think, you know, they need to be thanked as well, so I hope everybody knows, so.
I think Steve, it's a fair, I mean, it's our property and it's going in that direction. It's not heading west.
No, it won't.
It needs to head west.
It has to go west because it delays it goes across the street and there's no storms on the inside, and that water is very close to people's homes, so. Kind of a perfect storm in some way, right? But what can we do? I thank you.
And you, this gentleman that called us is all updated now? Wonderful. Okay, item ten, curriculum and standards committee leader report.
Julie. Hi, everybody. Uh, you have the board report in front of you. Just two main highlights from the meeting. Uh, we got an update on our GT program that our board approved as kind of a comprehensive revision, meaning criteria to be identified for students and our communication with parents and, um, the different ways that students can qualify in terms of reading and acibility. So Justin Jacobs is our new GT coordinator this year, and Mr. Sweene gave us an update, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any about that portion of the board report. And we also, the other main thing we talked about at our curriculum and standards meeting was the fact that the federal accountability reports came out from the ESA, um, Accountability Plan. Remember, the state, there are two sides to the ESA Accountability, uh, in Wisconsin. One is through the state forum, and that is where we get our state report card scores, where each of our schools get a score in our district. The other is the, uh, federal accountability criteria, which is slightly different than how we're scored from the state side. The goal of ESA is simply decrease gaps and increase student achievement. But none of our schools on the federal side were identified in need of improvement either, nor was our district as a whole, nor was our IDBA, which is our programming for special education students. So that was a really great piece of news, but we went through a little bit of the descriptors behind what is ESA, what is the difference again, just to keep us updated because it's a very complex system, but something that we hear a lot about through some of our WASB information and our, our leadership here and is highly accountable for the ESA Accountability. So I certainly can entertain any questions about that piece as well. And just some quick updates in your report about our in-service days, and, uh, we'll take care of extended field trips on our next agenda items, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Tony?
Great, then the other piece we talked about on which we need board approval. The curriculum and standards committee heard from Matt Lindsay and Mr. Sweene about a Great America trip for the high school science kids and a DC trip for the middle school students. And, uh, they were in approval to bring to the full board our recommendation for approval for those two extended field trips.
All the approval, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Corey Tomczyk and a second by Mike Kaiser. Questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Item ten, eleven, I'm sorry, eleven, personnel committee meeting report. Jessica.
Okay, personnel committee meeting, uh, met tonight, um, at five thirty, and we, uh, made an amendment to our agenda. We moved item on your current list, which was five G, we moved that up to five A for the sake of time. So we discussed, uh, we had a decision, discussion of possible recommendations for the team leader meeting times during the twenty nineteen, twenty school year. What we ended up doing is tabling that decision for one year because we did not have the information in front of us about that meet, about the team leader meet, uh, meeting. That was one of the reasons. The second reason is because we wanted to involve the new superintendent in that decision-making process and give him time to see this and give a recommendation with that as well. So at this time, we recommend to table that meeting for one year.
Are you making that forward to motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Bit of a motion by Jessica and a second by Kevin to table item G, which now moved up to A for one year. Questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Okay, item five, B, what we ended up doing, uh, discussion possible recommendation approval for the additional temporary early childhood fourth-day special education. With that, we also ended up tabling that along with five B through H to the full board because we ran out of time talking, um, about the team leader meetings. However, I did it once again and, and, um, we also, uh, were able to discuss the current job vacancies, which are likely to be brought to you.
Okay. So are you bringing it to the?
So everything else is being brought to the full board because we ran out of time.
Okay, so you're basically starting for, we're just going to go through each line item?
Correct.
Okay, starting with the B.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and I approve that A.
Perfect.
Give a chance, Jess, there's some information passing.
Before we got that, the personnel committee meeting regarding the board.
Presentation and discussion just started, so.
Got it.
Okay. So we're on the?
The vacancies.
The vacancies.
So the vacancies are all supports, uh, are starting with a support staff, seven point two five hours temporary regular education teacher assistant at the middle school, seven point two five hours regular education teacher assistant at the elementary school, four day, uh, four hours per day housekeeper. And with teaching staff, you have special education teacher at the elementary school due to retirement and filled by internal candidate. Another special education teacher at the middle school due to retirement, filled by internal candidate. Special education teacher at the high school due to retirement. Guidance counselor at the elementary school due to retirement and a physical and, and for health and physical education teacher due to retirement in the middle school. Those are all the job vacancies currently listed.
Okay.
Item five, now C, discussion and possible recommendation approval of temporary educator, temporary early childhood fourth-day special education teacher position.
Motion approved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Corey, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Mark. Discussion.
I'd like the presentation that was, uh, started.
Darlene, if you could give the, or Ashley, Mary, whichever, would like to give that background on that.
Sure, I'm going to have Amy Kerntop, who is our early childhood teacher, help me out with this. But, um, if you remember, we came in December, uh, John was just. Um, we came in December and asked the board, um, for extra help because our numbers had doubled with our three and four-year-old special ed kids. And now when we've looked at our projections and we've looked at our current screening, we could be up to twenty-seven kids, um, starting in the fall with all of our screenings and all of our kids that we still have that will be with us again next year. And I brought Amy along because she kind of put some information together that she could share with you all still on the program.
Um, I'll first let you know that, uh, we receive referrals from a number of sources. Our three-year-olds are our first, our youngest students, um, and the three-year-olds that we are serving right now are those that have, uh, a special education need. That's documented either by a referral source like birth to three or through our standardized testing. So we are also entrusted to, are required to find those children in our school district. We know that early intervention works. We've known that for about fifty years. So state and federal law requires that we find those students, support them at an early age so that, um, those delays and disabilities may not continue to affect them as they grow older. So, um, over the past five years, I looked at my caseload, um, and so I start my numbers, uh, really typically in the lower range. On average, I have ten students to start the school year, but those kids come into our program in early childhood throughout the school year, once they turn three or once they're referred by a 4K teacher. So I typically grow, uh, by ten students. So I might start with ten, end up with twenty by the end of the school year. My projection for next year, we have a large number of kids that are three or four that will stay in early childhood, so we will start the school year with seventeen students. So even if you go with the average that I've been seeing over the past five years, that's going to add, uh, you know, up to twenty-seven students. And, um, that's pretty high. Our neighboring school districts, the early childhood teachers average, um, ten students per teacher. Um, I will start the year with seventeen. And so that's quite a bit higher than, than on average. The other part of it is now, in the past five years, we have been seeing kids in their natural environments, which is what, uh, the law requires and what's best for kids. So we're seeing kids in homes, all of our 4K sites in the community, um, in childcare settings, and then also in our building at the elementary school. So that does add quite a lot of time, um, in terms of your commitment to kids. So, um, we've had the help since January. That's been just great. We're able to meet all the IEP minutes. We decide what kids need based on their needs, not what I can provide. So what the means is we're covering, supporting kids in all these different places and, um, and we're giving them what they need. What we don't have is the ability to process all those referrals. Each referral taking about five hours to do, and so if I do, I can get nine between October, nine or ten between October and January. So, um, it's quite a lot of time that we do and, uh, quite a lot that we give to the youngest kids, so.
And our, our part-time person is in the back row, Casey, is the person that you would, um, approve for us to hire. So she's been here. She was Amy's sub before, and then she's been here since January helping us out, and it's really worked out very nicely, um, for our kids to get all the minutes on our IEPs and that.
And right now, we have two referrals under evaluation. We have five kids. Then we get notified from birth to three, and those, our kids are likely to qualify because they've already been identified. And we have seven students, seven out of eight sign up for our screening in April. We have eight slots, we have seven filled already.
So how many of the four-year-olds are not in the special education program that are enrolled in the elementary?
Well, in the elementary school right now, in our 4K classroom, you're talking?
No, that you're anticipating for the nineteen, twenty year. These are all special ed students. They're, we don't, are you talking about the total number of 4K? Oh, I wouldn't know if you're not.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What's the enrollment? I, I have a good question.
Yeah, do you know, Katie?
Well, currently this year, there's a hundred and twenty-nine 4K students, district-wide.
This year, with the 4K?
Currently, yeah.
4K. How many?
Hundred and twenty-nine.
Okay.
So the twenty-seven-year-olds seem incoming as in early childhood, that's the, the reason?
Well, there's seventeen that are going to carry over, and then with all our evaluations and all of our birth to three referrals, then it's going to jump us up.
Right now, all seventeen of those, um, students will be in the 4K, not necessarily just in the elementary school as a whole. So that is our biggest group right now. But then the, the referrals we have under evaluation and the ones we have in birth to three, which is seven, those students will be our three-year-olds that would go into 4K to come over there. So we have seventeen kids already identified that will be in the 4K.
And three-year-olds.
Um, yeah, those are, yeah, grade level.
So the numbers have increased dramatically.
Dramatically, yes, dramatically.
So what's the process shift that's made?
Um, I can tell you that, I mean, I've done this for twenty-two years and I can tell you right now that it is, um, the effects of trauma that we're seeing. A child's most rapid brain development is the first three years of their life, bar none. You think about an infant to a three-year-old, what they can do, how the changes that are made in their brain. We're having a lot of kids that are having that rapid brain development, but they're, are, they're experiencing trauma, neglect and abuse. And also, the opioid crisis affects our community greatly. So we are seeing kids that at that time where there's the most growth is where they're actually having the most assault on their brain development. And there are lifelong effects to that, lifelong. Lots of kids that I have now on my caseload are being raised by grandparents, foster care, um, you know, have had just various traumas before they even hit kid school age, before they're three, actually.
So who is, uh, part of the IEP team?
It depends on the child's, um, disability. So it could be your occupational therapist, your physical therapist, your speech therapist, myself as a school site. It would be Amy, the early childhood teacher, Casey usually is there, um, if parents are there, sometimes grandparents.
Regular ed.
Regular ed teachers, social worker, so it's quite a large group.
And we still continue to have kids with autism, kids with cerebral palsy, kids with Down syndrome. You know, things that are congenital. But I, I think in my experience and what I'm looking at now, that's what we're seeing. We're seeing these kids that, um, they have pretty, pretty significant challenges just as a three-year-old.
I have a question as regarding this form. It says first choice of 4K site. It says waiting list for Mosney Elementary School.
That, that's regular 4K versus special ed?
So that's a difference for teen.
Maybe someone can give a future example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and again, just for the board, there is going to be a 4K report on the regular population at the April Board meeting, so those issues will be brought to you in April. This is the special education.
Right, right, yeah.
And again, if it's a 4K student with my EPR or your students, yeah.
Keep any of the kids back down in the 4K? Does every kid just automatically move up to, in the sped students? Are you removing them up or are you keeping some down?
Nope. Um, students go, uh, it, it, that's a team decision, so that's very individual for every, each and every student. But, um, the far majority of kids go to the 4K and they go to the 4K of their choice. So that's where we're going to multiple places because the family decides what's best for their family. And then that student goes to whichever site the parents choose and our staff follows them.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I meant, do they, do you keep, do you keep them back? You know, do you move them on if you feel like they're having issues? Are you going to have them repeat the 4K program or move them on?
Usually that's a parent decision if they're repeated. Very seldom do we look at, um, retention in an IEP meeting. We just look at child's needs. And we do like to. We just look at child's needs and we do like to keep them with their same age tiers. Some kids will do a dual program. We have one next year that will be part early childhood and part 4K.
We'll be with a three-year-old class and also go with a 4K. We wouldn't ever hold him back or hold a student back, we adapt for what they need.
Any other questions?
Just a clarification, Mary, right now we're talking once again about a temporary position. But if the trends continue, I would assume perhaps next year at this time, we're gonna be talking about a permanent position, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
A D Services adding staff right now and their, their pieces are ten to eleven students per teacher. So they're already, they've already added.
Just a heads off for the board.
And if you ever wanna come visit or you want us to come and explain more about the program, we're glad to do that.
As far as those kids being in the special education three, is there at some point when they're done with their three that they graduate and just go to the regular 4K instead of the special education?
Yeah, some of them do.
Like they're dismissed.
It's case by case and it's an IEP decision.
How often does that happen?
Um, I would say for kids, I see more students that, that receive a variety of services, early childhood. They, if they're dismissed, it's usually around second or third grade. Not as much from the three-year-olds to the fours. Usually the kids that I have in a three-year-old group or I see in their daycare or at their home have significant delays and significant needs. So they typically, it takes more time. But, but you're, if they're, if that's gonna happen, it typically happens between second and third grade, right around there, instead of, you know, some eighth grade, for example.
We even have one home mom student too that Amy actually goes out to the home to service the child.
Any other questions? If not, we already have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, now D, discussion and possible recommendation approval of high school business education teacher hire. Darlene.
We are looking to hire Stephanie Yonk. She is from Wausau School District, Wausau West. She's been a business teacher there for five years. She's actually was recruited to apply, so. Came in, met with me last Saturday, very excited. She's also had five years out in the business world. So we are looking to hire her to replace Mrs. Shary, who retired at the high school. She has a master's degree.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Oh, second?
So we have a motion by Kevin and a second by Jessica. Any other questions?
She has her master's degree. Must have had the position before completing her master's.
She, she did, yep, she got her master's degree in two thousand sixteen.
That number's in that up for five years of her brother's experience.
Well, she said five years, she had to start it with a bachelor's at Wausau West.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry?
Item five, E, discussion and possible recommendations, student, summer student wages.
We are looking, we had our summer student wages posted since January. We're not doing really good on collecting applicants. We made sure we put it on the sign at the high school, they're on the TV monitors at the high school. We have them in the guidance department, that kids can go and get applications in their postings. They're at the high school IMC. We've listed it out on our website, just not getting the applicants. So we're asking if we could raise the amount from nine dollars per hour to ten dollars. And then if they return, we were paying them nine dollars and twenty-five cents and we would like to increase that to ten dollars and fifty cents. We are looking that we'd like to hire nine summer employees this year, meaning that we want some for the high school, I mean for housekeeping. And then we want some for two or three for the department. So if we did get nine employees and we, this was approved, we'd be looking at a cost of four thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And if that's if those kids work every single day, and usually they don't because they have sports or they have family vacations. So that would be the high end of the cost.
When, when does the position start?
They start as soon as school is out.
Do you think it's a reason you didn't get any responses yet is because it's a little early?
Well, we've had it posted for usually a half month.
Okay. So we have a motion by Corey Tomczek and a second by Mark Uwes. Any other questions?
What if, what if we don't get any future applicants?
Then you're gonna have to help us out. Hopefully, well, I just heard that the paper mill increased from twelve dollars to fifteen.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry with one.
Item five, discussion and possible recommendation approval of additional reservations, retirees or hires.
We had one late on Thursday night and that was actually a transfer in the high school. Mr. Lehman and his team interviewed and they actually transferred Darren Drebbett to that position that was vacant by Kathy Kleimer. And now we did post Darren Drebbett's position.
What did Darren?
Special ed, he went from special ed to another special ed position, I'm not sure.
He went from being a learning disabilities teacher to an emotional learning to the intellectual disabilities.
Motion by Kelly Zebra and a second by Mike Kaiser. Further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry?
Item five, G, update on new extra person hires.
We actually are hiring three middle school soccer coaches. At the middle school, there's twenty-eight students and there are two teams. Mr., I can't remember his name, he's our soccer guy. Zach Yule asked if he could split the position. So he is splitting with one of them and that is Jay Parker, who has looks like a lot of years of soccer experience, soccer coaching experience. The other two that are gonna split the soccer coach position is Megan Schultz and Sam Moret. Or Morgan Schultz and Sam Moret. They are two middle school employee teacher assistants. They did help out with soccer last fall, so they wish to split that contract. That is on our compensation schedule as a C3. The cost for that is two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-six cents for each shared contract. So they're gonna split them fifty-fifty, so we'll have four soccer coaches for the two positions.
Thank you. That concludes the first half of the report.
Item twelve, finance committee report, Mr. Kaiser.
This evening at the finance meeting, we agreed to accept the Hocken Dash PPA mid-year audit report, which was, as Brent also notes, okay and satisfactory. I would so move.
Okay, we have a motion by Kaiser, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Mark Uwes. Further questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry?
Okay, item twelve, B, is middle school best to do? We had three kids on it and the one that was more favorable, I'm gonna teach this to the school district, was Ellis, uh, out of Stevens Point. Oh, yeah, Ellis. For seventy-nine thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars. And I would so move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike Kaiser, is there a second? And a second by Corey Tomczek. Further questions or discussion?
Yeah, the private funding, it sounds like some of it's coming from grants. Is there, I guess, what is the status of the?
The safety grant?
Yeah. It's approved. Is there any balance?
Is there a balance? No, it's a project within the safety.
Project, project specific?
To the grant, yes.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry?
Okay, item twelve, C, therapy dollar. Brent says he contacted fifteen different trainers. And one again is Stevens Point. This young lady said Renee Adurant. Said she would trade the dog for ten thousand dollars and she would secure the dog. She's doing all the legwork. And she has looked at about five dogs yet, which has not quite been her satisfaction. Kristi Helf will take care of the dog after we get her, or him. And we have secured some donations for the food and care of some portable kennels, a thousand dollars. She will train, or every, spend two days, I guess, with the training every year. And the total will be about eleven thousand dollars, which will be donated by PPO and different organizations. So I, I would so move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike Kaiser and a second by Corey Tomczek. Further discussion or questions?
You know, I would make an amendment if I could to that, to extend that there'd be some compensation for the person that's gonna be the lead person for the dog, Kristi, I think.
Well, she's gonna get all the, what's in cases and.
Well, besides the intangibles and the, well, all of that happens, but. This, this is a point of order, you can't amend someone's motion, you can make a separate motion after them.
But I wanted to create the discussion for that, so that's what my way of saying it is.
Good point. Further discussion? Right now, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry, but Kevin, good point, I mean.
Now, now I can make a motion? Is that how we can do it or no?
Well, because a motion pays.
Yeah, can I make a motion after?
You can bring it back for a future agenda item if you would like.
Wow, what an asshole, okay.
You got some extra money you wanna volunteer?
No, it's just, it still comes to a vote, mine itself.
Well, we're bored of your money.
You can wait and watch.
Okay.
He can make a motion, we're still on that subject. He can, he can make his motion, he intended, he just, he cannot amend someone else's motion. The person making the motion has the right to amend the motion. And then the motion, that amendment passes, the person who revised the second for the motion approves the amendment. Point of order. He wants to make that.
I know what you're, I get what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. It's just usually when we, we have it listed that way, if it already passes on the motion, are we not, can we continue to add something to it?
It's inherent to the subject matter at hand. If it was something completely different, if he was saying, now I wanna spend money on playground equipment, that wouldn't be legal under the rules of, under the rules of order or legally within the state of the law. True, but he's, he's apparent to the subject matter. It's, 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 it would be a motion directly to the listed agenda item, it was perfectly fine to do it. If you don't want to, go ahead, shoot your call, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to see, because being a brand new year too, I mean, not seeing what this might lead into, is something to come back for a future. But I mean, it's up to you if you'd like to.
We'll come back to it.
Okay.
Okay, um, twelve, D, Chromebooks, Brady, this is very complicated. Maybe I should put you last.
Well, maybe he's getting them called.
Yeah, let's do the finance, go do the financing.
He's coaching soccer. Always coaching.
Going to go coach.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's a good pitch.
Brent's here.
Brady said that this is very touchy and there may be a phone call before the meeting's over, so I thought I'd let Brady handle it. But Brent, if you wanna do it.
Sure, basically, we're looking at Chromebooks. Brady started out going to six vendors. We're down to two that are kinda jockeying back and forth for the best deal. And we're just kinda playing around, seeing if we can save money and day they drop a dollar. So we're basically at the point where we're gonna buy thirteen hundred Chromebooks for about a hundred and seventy-six dollars a piece. The management software is twenty-three fifty, twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. So basically, you're looking at about a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar expenditure. We're getting roughly twenty-four dollars-ish per unit for the trade-in of the old thousand units. And it's an item that we're bringing you, just to let you know what we're doing. And the price may change and the way it would change would be going down. And we'd ask you to approve us doing this, it's in the budget and it's something that we're, the Chromebooks we have now are four years old.
Motion approved.
And these are good factors, G6. I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Corey and a second by Mike Kaiser. Further discussion?
Corey, would you amend to say that we could save some money if they go down? You know.
Let me think about that. Of course. We're gonna discuss it, right?
Yes, Amy, you catch that? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
So the bogey of what's in the budget, what is in the budget for this line item?
About two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, I would say.
So it's a favorable, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're in good shape.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry?
Volunteer list. I would so move that we improve the volunteer list for March nineteen, nineteen point nineteen. For a total of one million four hundred and eight thousand point eighteen fifty-one. Because that is, I would so leave and, that'll be a real call.
Oh, we'll do the second. I'll second. Gorman?
Yes.
Uwes?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Tomczek?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, the treasurer's report dated March thirteenth, twenty nineteen, for the month ending February twenty eighth, twenty nineteen. I would so move to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
And that'll be a real call.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Tomczek?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Uwes?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes. Thank you. Moving on to other reports, thirteen would be thirteen A, Wasby?
Would be me. And we have a spring workshop again, a legal role, the responsibility, school board. It's Maple. It's May seventh through the sixteenth and there's various locations. Few of us have done this, CISA nine is, is in Tomahawk. So if anybody's interested, it's on the web and I have it here if you're interested.
Okay. Alrighty, CISA nine.
CISA nine, it should be in your reading packet.
Alright. Item fourteen, future agenda items. Don't forget April, we'll be meeting with Steve LaSalle from Neola. So if you have policies that you wanna review, possibly change, but he'll be bringing back all the changes that he'll have and we'll get those ahead of time as well. But if you have something, if you wanna send it to myself, Amy, John, send them to look at, please do so.
Yeah, I put, um, I have thirty nineteen on that, so yes.
Okay, the only thing I want to bring up, and it's not a future agenda item, but I did ask Amy, it doesn't look like anybody's volunteered yet to do the April tenth CIA day at high school. And I know, I've done it for a couple of years and I know Kelly has done it. So if you guys, I'll try to get to it, but I mean, it'd be really great if we at least had a board member or two. Oh, could you? So it's Wednesday, April tenth, and it's all day, I know it's a long day, but it's really kinda really neat to sit in front of these students.
It's usually sort of all the quarter day till two thirty.
Yeah, I mean, it'll make an impression on you when you sit, you know. So Amy, keeping up the date to have available options, let me know.
Yes, my talk, my talk for today, she does have openings.
Perfect, so Mark.
I think it's eight to two, but she missed it.
But I think you get in there a little bit earlier, sooner you do the binders, okay? Alright, anything else, nobody's, alright, we're going on to fifteen. Moving it.
Future agenda?
Oh, I'm ready.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Alright, I have a couple items. Update of two thousand nineteen, two thousand.
Update of 2019, 2020, 4K enrollment by site with the review of the application process would be one line item. The other one would be policy review of discipline and non-renewal procedure for employees in appendix G of the compensation model. Would be my second item. The third one is a second request that was documented in our notes. Request further explanation of criteria requested of each section in the professional teaching staff compensation model. So there's three line items I'd like for the future of that. I'll be glad to put those in writing.
Could you?
Yeah.
And then send them to me. Perfect. Anybody else? Okay, well, we got to item 15, moved into closed executive session. The board will go into closed executive session pursuant to section, section 19.85. Friend one, friend E, other statutes for the purpose of discussion regarding property purchases. Section 19.85, friend one, friend E reads, delivering or negotiating, possessing or public property, investing with public funds, or conducting others to start a business.